Clearwater Conservancy has been committed to conserving and restoring the natural resources of Center County and beyond for more than 40 years. In 2022, we purchased 10 acres on Spring Creek in Howzerville. We have a 20-year relationship with this land, having restored the streamside forested buffer in 2004. This property, in the heart of the Spring Creek watershed, is the site of our new permanent home and our local conservation, restoration, and education programs. The public will be welcome to explore the stream, as well as use the community meeting room for partnerships and collaboration. Clearwater's dedicated volunteers will see firsthand the positive impact of their efforts. Your support ensures that our conservation work thrives, protecting our natural resources for everyone. As an accredited land trust, we promise that residents will enjoy clean water and natural areas for many years to come. Your support is essential in preserving our natural resources for future generations. Visit clearwaterconservancy.org to learn how you can get involved.
Did you know that CNET has over 30 years of program archives available to the public? For a requested donation of $20, you can receive a DVD or digital copy of any program in our library going back to 1988. The CNET archives include: high school graduations and award nights, school district concerts and sporting events, Skoll Library write and illustrate your own book awards, Memorial Day in Wolfsburg and the Central Pennsylvania Festival of the Arts, military history lectures, silverware roundtables, and many more. And don't forget about the meetings. We have an expansive archive of local government, as well as Bellefontaine State College area school board meetings. CNET has been covering the Center County community for over three decades, and we have the tape to prove it. Visit cnet1.org to browse our archives, and you can call or email us to order your own DVD or digital copy today. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
I'd like to call to order the Bellefontaine Borough Council Work Session. First item is a trivia question by Vice President Dan.
Okay. Tonight's question is, what is Pennsylvania's state animal?
CNET guys.
Anybody guess?
That's a softball.
Gross. Anybody? State animal?
Our students. Take a guess.
Just take a guess.
The season is in right now.
Whitetail deer.
What?
Deer.
No, animal.
Whitetail deer.
Hey, you stole my answer.
I'm sorry.
You stole my thunder there.
He guessed it. He guessed it.
With a few clues, but good. It is the whitetail deer.
Doug, did you know that? Ralph, have him removed.
We're gonna make him close his computer.
Next. Next item, we're fortunate enough to have Officer Luce with us from the Bellefontaine Police Department to give us a demonstration on the AED. Take it away, Officer Luce.
Hey, thank you for inviting me. I kind of got this on short notice and what I was to talk about, so I will be a little more vocal with what they wanted to talk about. I talked with Ralph a little bit prior to the meeting. AEDs in healthcare have been a hot topic for a long time. People suffer from an event called sudden cardiac arrest at a moment's notice. You don't know when it's going to occur, you don't know where, how it's gonna happen. In sudden cardiac arrest, a little epidemiology about it is, the heart goes into a rhythm that's not compatible with life, where it's kind of shocking or shuddering or quivering out of control, at which point the only way to really stimulate that, to get it back into a functional, organized rhythm, is usually through electricity. In two to three minutes, brain tissue and other tissues start to die from lack of oxygen and circulation. So in all of the event of a cardiac arrest, a sudden cardiac arrest, coupled, you know, in changing the numbers, in changing the numbers to increase survivability, it takes several things to be coupled with it. Early recognition of what's going on, for somebody to realize that this person's just not passed out because they're intoxicated or under the influence, but to do a couple simple techniques. One would be level of responsiveness, are you okay? To check and see if they're breathing. And lastly, for something as simple as touching their neck and feeling for a pulse. If they're without a pulse, that clock has already started. So the effect of CPR increases the survivability drastically, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But with good, high-quality CPR, it will give that person an increased chance. The biggest part of getting that heart muscle or tissue back into an organized rhythm is through the use of, you know, electrical shock in what's called an AED. AED stands for, is an acronym for Automated External Defibrillator, which a lot of us have seen over the time, TV shows where they'll put paddles on somebody's chest and they rise up. That's delivering a shock of electricity to them. Its intentions is to disrupt what's going on, allow the heart tissue to reset itself per se, and hopefully capture an organized rhythm. People were afraid of these when they first came out, and they thought they were gonna hurt them. They're as smart as we are sometimes. In the AED, it's a device that is carried in a lot of aspects of multiple careers. Coming in tonight, I saw one in the hallway, which I was informed that they were recently placed. There's one here in your chambers here, and it's only this big. So it takes that survivability rate from 5% to about 35% to 40%. Even a 1% increase is a drastic thing. I won't open these pads because they're expensive to get, and this unit's actually ready for service, but I'll walk you through it. In early recognition and defibrillation, these machines will tell you what to do. So if I were to collapse here and have a problem, and I'm found unresponsive, it's as simple as exposing the chest, and modesty is not of a thing when we're trying to save your life. We try and be respectful, but the other side of it is, it is what it is. The pads actually come with a, I want to walk around, that's just me, but I apologize. They come with a diagram of where to place them, so there's no confusion on what to do. And simply by placing the pads on and turning the device on, you're gonna hear beep.
Remove clothes from patient's chest.
It's telling me what to do. It's going to start walking me through this.
When patient's chest is bare, open gray plastic case and peel off white adhesive pads.
It's pretty much to the point that it's gonna walk you through it.
Remove clothes from patient's chest.
So at that point, it won't go any further till it knows that I've opened the case. So it won't go any further. In the meantime, while that's going on, somebody who's doing CPR is the big part of this. Somebody that's doing compressions, if you don't know how to do compressions, you know, there are several things to do. First of all, while you're realizing that I am collapsed or unresponsive on the floor and somebody's grabbing AED, the next thing is that somebody getting help coming. You can't last forever doing these things. They're stressful, they're tiresome, they're emotional, and when you call a simple number is, we know it and we advertise the daylights out of it, it's 911. And in that, you know, that's where we're coming. And I'm making a phone call here, not to be disrespectful.
Hey, Gingrich.
Hey Gingrich, it's Luce.
Sorry?
They were supposed to answer that this is 911. Obviously, there was a failure to communicate, because we didn't want to tie up the 911 line. So in all of that, they would answer 911, what's the address of your emergency? You would provide this address. We have, you know, Officer Luce collapsed, he's unresponsive, we've placed, we're working on getting AED on, what do we do? That dispatcher's gonna read a set of cards that's a national standard or called APCO. They'll flip to unresponsive, to without a pulse, they're going to tell you step-by-step instructions on how to do it. They will tell you, find the nipple line, put your heel over your hand, and push down one to two inches, preferably closer to two. And, you know, they're gonna help you with that, and they're gonna get you, and they're gonna keep you on the phone, walking you through things step by step. That's where this tool comes into place. It will tell you what to do and guide you from there as well. So in that, this device, there are pains sometimes, the batteries go dead, they beep in the car all day long telling us that the battery's dead, we've gotta get another one. It's, I'm gonna sound like a marketing campaign, but it's well worth its weight. I'm sure many of you have seen the Facebook post. I actually know this guy, and I've been involved with cases with him. His name's Dr. Harry Camro. He's a pathologist at Mountain Innie. That's the man who went into cardiac arrest that we saved at Penn State. So in all of that, had the chance to reunite with him, and that is the epitome of CPR and working. That is why we do what we do. The troopers are the ones who are credited with the biggest part of this, in my mind is, they saw him go down, they called for help. I heard it on the radio. Me being nosy, I walked over and looked in the door, they're rolling him over and starting to do compressions. So in all of that, the next thing that's needed is a device to shock him, to recognize what's going on, and that's exactly what happened. I will tell you this little part of it, and I won't go into a whole lot of other details with him. He was delivered a shock with an AED device. About 30 seconds later, his first words were, "I'm not going to the cath lab." And he's looking at us. So you take away from that, for all those ones where we try, and the sad part of it is, this past Saturday, there were two cardiac arrest events that didn't survive. And I don't know all the logistics to it, but they were given, I know the AEDs were applied, and it might be a rhythm that's not shockable. If you have a pulse, it won't shock you. If I put that on me right now, it'll say, "Start CPR." Because, you know, the device is actually very intelligent, it'll know what to tell, it'll tell you what to do. It'll tell me to check for a pulse, it'll tell me what to do, it'll give me the two-minute mark whenever I need to assess you again. Stop CPR, assess the patient. That's meaning check for breathing and a pulse. If no pulse is present, continue CPR, and you hope that there are other people coming. As I was talking with Ms. Dan prior to the meeting, Bellefontaine Borough and Spring Township Police Departments all carry these devices while in patrol. We have one in every cruiser, every officer is trained with them. Between Bellefontaine and Spring Township, we have the highest degrees of AED usage in the county. We apply them more than any, even the EMS crews, we apply them more than anybody else in the county. And that's in a testament to officers wanting to be involved, because they're doing what they're supposed to do, they're trying to protect a life and save a life. So with that, those things are very, very useful tool. In the posting, it listed about people not knowing how to do CPR, there's classes around you all the time. We don't necessarily open this up to the public, but for the borough employees, we are a training center for the borough, just because it would take too much of my focus time from my duties to try and facilitate classes, and there's one instructor in the training center, and I'm it. But Bellefontaine EMS, Seven Mountains, Pleasant Gap, reach out to them and they'll help you find a CPR class. I know that there's an incentive coming up from the hospital in February, that one of the other things with sporting events, we discussed this, that the sudden cardiac arrest of kids on athletics, we're seeing that becoming more and more prominent, and it's now to the point that trainers are carrying them. But it's the early recognition of what's going on and getting help to come. It's an emotionally-driven thing that we work through, and there was one here where one of our officers responded to a church, and there was a member of the church that had, was found out in the sidewalk. His CPR was good, or the CPR that he received was fantastic, I got a chance to see the officer as I got there, and unfortunately, he succumbed to things further down the road that just, there was a little bit too much time, we think. So the body was good, the mechanics were good, the brain capacity, and the injuries start to occur from lack of oxygen. So here's the thing, if you don't have an AED, high-quality CPR, you know, deep and fast and hard and long is the biggest thing until you can get one. The immediate start of that, and everybody used to be of the mindset, "I can't do mouth-to-mouth." American Heart has determined that mouth-to-mouth doesn't necessarily have to occur, and it makes sense. If you squeeze the air out of a soda bottle, and when it's warm, you squeeze it out, it usually reinflates. Same thing happens to your lung. If I push all the air out, there's a natural recoil that occurs within the chest that causes the lungs to pull air back in, and they've determined that sufficient oxygenation to meet the minimum standards, it's something. I mean, the person having a tube or being innovated or extra care or additional advanced care makes a big difference, but the compressions is a big thing, because blood sitting in one place depleting oxygen is of no value. So brain death occurs, and that's what we're really trying to prevent. Dr. Camro recovered from his event with zero deficits, zero neurological deficit, and he is in the high percentile of surviving with zero deficit. So, and he's planning on returning to work sooner than he's supposed to. So that just says in a testament to the troopers doing what they did, they realized that something was wrong, they acted. And even if it's something that physically we can't do it, getting somebody else to come and be allowed. I'm not a quiet person when that happens, I need help, you know, that's the biggest part. But getting us coming, we'll get there more times than not, unless it's close to the EMS station, we're usually there long before the ambulance arrives. So, is that kind of what you were looking for, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions about this device?
What about maintenance? We have a couple of in the building, what's the most important thing you can point out that we need to be doing?
Two things. All the pads come with an expiration date, these are 11/26, so that gives you an idea of the timeframe. This device, and they're the same ones that we carry, have a battery pack in them, they will tell you why they will be becoming an obnoxious beep every 15 to 20 seconds until you replace the battery. And that's how we maintain them. Dry and wet, open them up periodically, turn them on once in a while. Some of the newer variants actually come with a meter scale for the battery, but as long as the expiration's good and these are still sealed, that's the maintenance. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Sean.
You're welcome.
Mr. Luce.
We can do the council members as well, because what it would consist of, it would be something where I go in, I build a training roster, we plan a day to do it, and we turn around, and I will send you an email link that you will do it, it's a blended class, where you'll do a majority of it online, and I can see your progression as it goes down through, and at which point, once we get to the point of the written test, we will meet up, administer the test, and then we'll have, you know, there'll be a practical session and day to it that you will go through, and the classes, I can either do CPR, first aid and CPR, and we can do those and focus on them. If it's both, it uses about a whole day's worth of practical time, but we can break it up around schedules. I do that with the officers. We do a blended learning, and then I come in on their shifts, and we do the practicals as they're not busy, rather than pulling them in on a day off. You're welcome. I will tell you, from being a paramedic for 28 years, and a police officer for coming up on 26, my successful recoveries is far less than my unsuccessful attempts, but you wouldn't have that attempt without trying to do something, and this is what changes a lot of it. So, but, sorry about that, I thought I had it on silent.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two on our work session tonight is the tentative 2025 budget book overview.
So Lori and I will go down through this, I know, all I do is cut and paste. Lori does the hard work of putting the Excel spreadsheets together. Let me check my phone here, Randy is calling in on my phone this evening, so it sounds like there might be a little bit of interference. Move that away a little bit. So this is the title, or the cover sheet, the budget book, we call it. All of this will be posted after tonight's meeting and before Friday, the 6th. We'll make any changes that are approved at the council meeting this evening, and get those posted, again, on or before Friday, the 6th. We're required to have a 10-day inspection period before council acts on the budget, so if we post it the 6th or sooner, our next meeting is the 16th, so that'll give us our 10 days. Not only in addition to posting this document on our website, it'll be available 24/7, but if somebody wants to see a paper copy, you can come into our normal business hours, 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and review the budget. And again, we'll act on it on the 16th. That regular meeting is at 7:30 PM. That same evening, we'll have a public hearing to take input on the budget before council acts on it. And then, following the public hearing, we'll have an adoption of the budget with any changes that evening, and that'll be the final budget.
Excuse me, Ralph.
Yes, sure.
Officer Luce has one other thing to add.
I'm sorry. No problem.
I apologize, I had an epiphany walking out the door. In reference to the AED, and I spoke of its intelligence, the one thing it does is, if there is a successful resuscitation with it, and the patient's transported to Mountain Innie, we've partnered, all the police departments have partnered with the hospital, that the AED goes to the hospital, that information in the beginning is downloaded and sent to the cath lab, so physicians can see what we saw first, you know, initially. So that's another step in the level of care and the importance of these devices, that kind of explains why officers sometimes get excited or try and get somewhere. I've been guilty of that too, but I also know on the other side of it, of what the end result can, you know, be, so we try and make an effort of it. But that's how big this circle goes with these devices. Even yours or the ones you have here would go to the hospital and be downloaded, they would be leaving with the patient and stay with them, they'll pull it down, and then we'll figure out getting it back later. So, sorry about that, I just happened to, wanted to share that, it's good information.
It's not stuff that just sits in the trunk. All right. Enjoy your night, ladies and gentlemen.
We were just talking about the cover page of the budget. This is in the form of a budget book we put together, I'll just kind of walk down through what's in it, and then people can look for themselves when they have time. We always put in a budget message, it kind of gives an overview of where we're at, a little bit about our tax base, we're a very small geographic area, which creates some challenges for us, but that's some of the things we mentioned in the budget message. We talk a little bit about priority budgeting and trying to work within our means where We are carrying over some funds from this year's budget into next year's budget for the general fund to make it a balanced budget. There's a couple places where we're looking at some increases, where we'll, we can discuss that, a couple more pages from now, I'll go over that. The Water and Sewer Authority sets those rates, and they meet on December 10th, so that's something that they will consider whether there's any water or sewer rate increases. And again, our next meeting is Monday, December 16th. This is the table of contents of everything that's in the budget book. We'll sort of walk down through everything. Oops, one second here. See if I skipped anything. This is the proposed budget, we call it a budget in brief. We'll sort of walk down line item by line item. This one, this page pretty much covers everything. The general fund, again, we're not looking at any proposed increases. We always use the amount of the, that equals the revenues, and the same amount is what we plan for expenditures. We balance each fund the same way, so we just use that one number, and you can see that number is $3,784,210. The sources, taxes and fees, again, we're not proposing any increases. The street lighting fund is $109,045. It's a real estate line item on the tax bill, the real estate tax bill, and we're proposing a small increase of .05 mils. The fire department operating fund is a $250,925 fund. It's also a separate line item tax on the real estate bill, and we're proposing a small increase of .12 mils. The fire equipment fund is $101,390. It's a real estate tax line item. We're not proposing any increase in that fund. The parks fund is $137,865, and it's also a separate line item real estate tax source of revenue, and we're proposing a small increase of .20 mils. Again, the water and sewer funds are under the authority, and they will look at whether rates will be increased or not. The refuse fund, the garbage collection fund, this fund is $1278,105, and it's solely supported by the customer fees, utility fees charged for the collection of garbage, and we are proposing an increase of $4 per quarter for that fund. We have a special projects fund, it's kind of like a holding fund, it's $2133,310. It could be for like grant projects and those types of things. Liquid fuels, highway aid, this is money that we receive from the state through the gas tax system. It's $259,000 for the budget, and there's no increases, basically, we only get an allotment based on the formula. The emergency medical service tax is a separate real estate line item tax. The budget for that item, that fund, is $28,735. We are proposing, possibly it'll be considered for this evening, a .05 increase, but again, that'll depend on action this evening. Any of these increases will depend on action this evening, and then action on the 16th as well. The capital projects, again, is kind of, sort of like a holding fund as well. The bulk water fund is water sold, kind of wholesale to Milesburg Borough and what is now Niagara Bottling. All those monies are set aside and pretty much used for match funding that would, otherwise we would not have available. The amount of that fund is $354,600. And we created a new fund for this building. This building has, obviously has some revenues with some tenants, and it has some expenses as well, so we created a separate fund for the building. It's called 301 North Spring Street, and the budget for that is $93,840. Again, we have three tenants in the building, and, you know, we're not proposing, will be non-applicable for increases. So the total budget, tentative budget, is $16,146,980. Again, this is our budget in brief page, it's a good place to go to if you're looking at kind of overall what the borough is going to be doing in '25. is going to be doing in '25. Yes?
Real quick, you said that it's a half, a .05 mil increase for emergency services. Back under the actual page, on page 60, you actually say it's a half mil, which is correct.
No, I, what I said on that other page was the EMS requested a half of a mil, and that we're considering a .05 mil.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Because it, that is, you know, Scott Mester wrote, the executive director, in his letter to the borough, proposed that he would like all the participating municipalities to be at one half of a mil. And, you know, we, we're obviously struggling to get there, but, and why we're at least looking at an increase, but that's, we're not quite there yet. We're at .30 right now, and we would like to be, eventually be at .5. So I'll, I'll try to summarize this. I won't try to, I won't go every detail or sentence by sentence or anything, but here we have a reader's guide. It's kind of like another summary of what's in the document. Talks about the budget cycle. You know, I gave, discussed that a little bit this evening. We actually look at the budget year-round. We receive treasurer's reports and financial reports every once a month, usually our second meeting of the month. So budgeting is not just in the fall of the year, it's year-round. We're looking at the numbers to see if that, we're in line with our spending plan, which is really what a budget is. All we're trying to do is put a plan together and what we think we'll spend in '25. And, you know, it's barring, you know, no major emergencies, no major snow events or floods. If, if those things happen, we obviously need to adjust somewhere to make up that extra Again, this is just a summary of what's in, it gives a little bit of, not only the summary, but a little bit of a definition of what each item is in the budget book. Before we get to the funds, this is a real estate tax 101, one, one or two-page overview. There's three taxing bodies that we all deal with as property owners, the county, the borough, and the school district, so we talk a little bit about that. This is a copy of what our tax ordinance will look like. If, again, we'll make any changes for this evening. We can make changes on the 16th as well, but once it's acted upon, we finalize it and send it to the county for their information. This is an office and staff, officials and staff overview. Want to see who's on council, the names of everybody. The staff members here are listed. An organizational chart we put in as well. We also include our goals and our recommendations that were developed through the strategic management plan that was finished in 2021. Has a lot of good information, helps us kind of look at where to, where to aim and where to set goals for next year as well. So we included a 2025 goals, action items. Their suggestions are not etched in stone. They're, you know, from comments that we received during the work sessions, the budget sessions this fall. Ones that staff came up with, we can always add to or, you know, change this accordingly. We also have the 25 or 24 accomplishments as well. And again, we may have missed something, but we tried to list, you know, the more pertinent ones that were accomplished in '24. So each fund, I'll just use the general fund as an example, because the general fund is more complicated, but each fund has a heading. Again, we go back to the table of contents. It's well marked where it's at in the book. We all, we have quick facts for people to look at, whether there's an increase or not, even proposed or not. And a little bit about the fund. We have some charts or graphs to help you see where the, where most of the costs are and where the, most of the revenues are from. And then we go down the detailed sheets, spreadsheets of each fund, the revenue, all revenue for the fund, and all expenses for the fund. See, and the general fund is the largest fund, most difficult, because there's, there's a lot of revenue, different sources, and a lot of different expenses. There are subcategories of the general fund. Council expenses are broken out. Executive expenses are broken out. Mayor expenses are broken out, treasurer, real estate collector, and so on. I go down to police, streets, everything that's under the general fund is broken out separately. Just to mention while we're here, you know, we, we're not proposing an increase in the general fund. It's always difficult to balance this fund, because again, going back to, we don't really have a, a large tax base. We don't grow very much each year. It's minimal. We're not adding new housing developments or new wage earners, so we struggle to balance this fund. And we are carrying over some funds from '24 into '25 to make that happen. Yes? We do, we're holding the grant funds, but as far as, is it revenue or expense?
What, I'm sorry, but what number was that again?
Should be special. Check.
So Ralph's right. We have a grant for them that we're holding the revenue, and my guess was that we would spend about $400,000 out of that grant next year. I don't know that for sure. That was an educated guess. But we have, they got a million-dollar grant.
It's just a guess. It's just a plan. If, I, I think Lori just planned in case they spend, if they don't spend it, nothing happens. It stays in the fund. There's no harm, no foul. You know, it's all grant funds, but it's just an educated guess. Maybe at the end, towards the end of the year, we do our testing, and the big spring project is, does not pan out, the one we're looking at, then maybe they start something. Maybe they start building something. But anyway, it's just an educated guess. If there's no funds spent, there's no, no problem.
So are we asking questions about each of these general budgets, or do you want to go through the whole thing and then we can start asking questions?
Probably. I'd just like to touch on some of the, the funds. I, I did it very briefly in the beginning. I thought I'd do it again real quick as we go down through the different, beginning of each fund where it says a quick facts and that kind of thing. For, for example, here, street lighting. So whatever's easier for you, we can stop at the general fund.
I'm fine either way. I just want to know what our procedure is.
Well, you know, I thought I'd go down through this and then see if you have any questions. Again, street lighting, we are proposing a .05 mil increase, a small increase. Now, we're planning on rehabilitating the old ornamental lights that we, that the borough owns. There, there are other lights that we lease from West Penn Power. We're talking about the ornamental lights that are primarily in the downtown or close to the downtown. So we're going to try to rehabilitate those. The fire department operating fund or department fund, there is a small increase proposed of a .12 mil. Again, everything's in this budget book. I'm just giving you kind of the, the overview very quickly, but all the information is here for anyone that wants to look at it. The fire department equipment fund, this is where, you know, the, the fire trucks and so on are, the funds come from this to help pay for that, for those types of equipment. We're not proposing any increase in that fund for this, for '25. The parks fund, which, which includes the waterfront walkway, you know, the Figure Eight and Tally Ram Park, all that, there is a small increase proposed, a .20 mil. Again, that's to try to provide some winter maintenance for the walkways, which we, we have not done in the past. We've kind of used some volunteers. We kind of did it as a secondary measure after the streets and the parking lots and everything else is done. But what we ran into is by the time that's done, the snow and everything's pretty much frozen, so we're going to try adding some winter maintenance and see if that helps. The water fund, again, the Balfont Borough Authority will set these rates or look at changing them on their December 10th meeting. Same thing with the wastewater fund or sewer fund. The authority will look at those rates as well at the December 10th meeting.
The maintenance of the baseball field, is this part of the parks fund? Or as you, in here on page 64, it's 4,127,000 baseball.
It would. Now, the school district does maintenance during the season on the field.
What you're looking at is, we got donation money. We got donation money, so, and we had a grant for some stuff out at the parks this year for the baseball field. So that's lingering in the special projects fund.
That's for the restroom?
Some of it was for the restroom, some of it, but that's what you're seeing, what you're talking about, it's in the special projects. So it's the, so they, yeah, so that was still part of the grant and the donation. So we're, yeah, we got a donation.
We have a .05. I just want to make sure zero isn't done.
Well, because that's, that's, that's the grant money that we got in, or the donation money, and so I'm not expecting if we get a grant, if we get a donation next year, great if anybody wants to donate money to the parks, but that's what it was for, for this year.
Yes, yes. And we, again, off-season, when the baseball team is done, we cut the grass. We, we cut the grass in the park, rake the leaves. We do that all season with our park staff. So back to the, the budget book, we're at the refuse fund. Again, we are proposing an increase of $4 per quarter. Just the rising costs of labor, equipment, supplies is a drive, is a reason for this increase, and it's been a while since we've increased our portion of the refuse bill. So that's being considered, and council would set that rate.
I guess I should try to confirm if somebody is hearing and they can't hear.
Okay, so the special projects.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Special projects fund, again, Lori and Doug were, I guess, pretty much talking about this. It is a holding fund for grants primarily. If I'm saying something wrong, Lori, let me know. But, and, you know, depending on what we think will happen with spending, they might be crossover more than one year, they may not, but it's a kind of a holding fund for The liquid fuels is, again, money that we receive from the state that people pay in their gas tax. It goes, it has very, it's highly regulated as far as its uses and its spending. We primarily use it for road paving and some equipment from time to time, and we get approximately $170,000 a year through the program. Emergency medical fund, we talked about this a little bit. Mr. Wrote, the director typically, and ended this year, asked for a half a mil funding from each municipality. We're at .30 currently. In our discussions, we are looking at maybe going to .35, which would be a .05 increase, and that'll be considered this evening even for the draft budget or the tentative budget, and then it'll be also considered the evening of the 16th for the final budget. Again, the capital projects fund is a holding fund for larger projects. The bulk water fund, again, is monies received from the sale of water, raw water, to Milesburg Borough and what is now Niagara. And we've always set that aside to use it for match funds or special project funds, where otherwise we wouldn't have the match money. And as I mentioned, we created a new fund called the 301 North Spring Street Fund. It's really a balance sheet for this building. Since it's new to us, we have more, we have expenses and we have revenues, we created a separate fund. That's all I wanted to go over, and I'll certainly see if you have any questions. Lori and I can try and answer.
Questions for Ralph, Joanne?
The, let me ask a general question first. Do you want to hold off on questions regarding the three items that are in the general session, or do you want them now as well?
If it's just we're going to restate them, we might as well wait till the regular meeting. We're just going to simply restate them, we might as well just wait till the regular meeting?
Well, one of them, I have an alternative suggestion.
Well, then go ahead, Joanne.
Okay.
That'll help, because we're running out of time.
Okay. On the, I'll do that one first then. On the public transit, you, you suggested as a possible .35 mil increase. I looked at the budget, and another possibility would be to increase the use of the amount of reserves in the general budget. This year's budget had an estimated use of reserves of $664,450, while the 2025 has a $279,000 proposed. And I also noted that I looked at the, the final line, and at the end of this year, we're having a net profit. a net profit of $259,249. So, I think that either we could use the .35 that you proposed, or without increasing taxes in the, in the general budget, we could use additional reserve funds to, for the $65,000, since we had the money there.
Lori, did you catch that?
That's up to you.
Yeah, that's a council question. It's not, you know, it wouldn't be up to staff. It'd be for council to consider during the meeting, either the draft budget and/or the final budget.
Okay. There, one general question that's not a line item, although it may be in that new section that you sent in this afternoon. I said, where in the budget is the salary, healthcare, social security costs for the assistant borough manager? I, I know we, I don't see where it has been, any funding has been allocated for the assistant borough manager now that Don has retired. And I also'd like to know when that appointment will take effect.
Well, to answer your question on the first item, the section that was left out has the salaries for the general government section. They're not broken out per position. They're broken out per department or area.
Okay. So, is there funds, my question then, is there enough funds in there to cover the assistant borough manager position the way it's currently written?
So, I kept, I put money in there for that, figuring that it would probably be at this point, March or April, until somebody took that position. So, I took it as having, like, three quarters of it a year of wages.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you. And let me see, is there anything else? Just one quick question. It's just a, what, what do you mean when you say water-dash-CW? It appears several times throughout the budget when there's a transfer in or out of the water budget.
The CW is just corning water.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ralph or Lori relative to the budget book or budget in general? Thanks for that presentation. Ralph, how much different is that than what you put on the website for the residents in years past? How much different is it?
We started this style probably three, three or four years ago, and that, you know, tweaked it a little bit. But this was kind of a major upgrade about three or four years ago.
Okay. Yeah. So, the residents can expect to see basically?
Yes, they can see this whole thing. We'll, we'll make the changes from tonight's meeting and post the whole document.
Thank you. There's no other questions or comments?
Oh, just, yeah. I guess I'll wait until the other session, because it's, it affects the budget. Because there's one item in the regular session that is not anywhere in the budget, and that's that water monitoring project. My only question was, where might that be put?
In the past, I think we took it out of bulk water fund. Just in tonight's communications, there's a request for about $3,000 for the Spring Creek Water Monitoring Project.
Yeah, it's in there. They ask for it every year. It's in bulk water.
Okay. But there's not a separate line for it then? I didn't see one.
I think it's combined with, there's two or three places that ask for money, and it's all combined into one line.
So, no, there's not a separate line for it?
It's not a separate line. Just for that, I put it all together. It's Conservation of Natural Resources under Bulk Water, and it's 481-500.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the work session.
So moved. Second.
Adjourned.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
Like to call to order tonight's Belfont Borough Council Business Meeting. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance.
You pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll take roll call attendance.
Mr. Bernier?
Here.
Mr. Brackville was, was by phone. He may call in in a moment. Ms. Clayton?
Here.
Ms. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. McKean is excused this evening. Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Here.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
I'm here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next item on our agenda is additions to the council meeting agenda. Any council members have any additions to the meeting agenda? If not, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment from anyone in the audience tonight about an item on the agenda. All right. Next is communications. The first written communication we had in tonight's packet is a DCED survey on land use and growth management. That was in our packet for information and for the public's information. The other one is a letter response to the CBD First Floor Residential Presentation. No council actions required with that one. Next is a ribbon cutting for the Terrapin, Terrapin Belfont store located at 205 Park Place, which will be held Thursday, December 19th at 11:00 a.m. Again, that's going to be on Thursday, December 19th at 11:00 a.m.
Just a curiosity question. Is that just inside or just outside the Belfont Borough limits? Because it's right up on the edge.
It's inside the borough, and that date and time is tentative at this point.
Next is the Spring Creek Water Resource Monitoring Project requested $2,859 for 2025. We have a council action request here to include this amount in the tentative budget for 2025. I need a motion and a second to approve it.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Joanne?
So, this is line 481.500 in the bulk water fund. It shows, that fund shows $3,875 for that line item. And they're, this group is asking for $2,859, which only leaves about $1,000 for the rest of them. What are the others, and is that enough for them? Or should we tweak this amount requested to help continue balancing this particular budget?
Lori, Lori left, but she said, you know, she uses the prior year funds to, you know, put the budget together for '25. So, I fully expect all the typical funds or expenses out of the bulk water fund to be re-put in for '25, maybe with a small increase. So, everything should be in there.
Okay. So, you're saying that this is a typical average amount that they've asked for in the past?
Yes.
You said they ask for it every year, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? If not, we need to vote. Okay. We have to vote?
Okay. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean is absent. Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
Joanne?
Joanne, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, and will be acted upon by one single motion. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? If not, we'll vote.
Okay. Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville, still not on. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean's absent. Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
Okay. Next are reports. The first one is from our mayor, Mayor Johnson.
I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Larson submitted his report.
Yeah, I just have a few things to talk about tonight. The first one, I have that the high school held a book tasting event in the school library, and it was coffee-themed, and it was to promote interest in books that the school had recently received. The student council held a volleyball tournament and raised over $1,000 for mini-thon. On Veterans' Day, the high school brought in veterans to talk about their stories and to just discuss what their experiences were like with their students. It was a great experience. Fall Thanksgiving, fall and Thanksgiving break was held from November 27th to today. So, we have to go back to school tomorrow sadly. But it should be good. We only have three weeks of school until winter break, so it'll be fun. And then the classes 2025 held a blood drive last month, and Spanish Honor Society had their induction last month as well. And National Honor Society held a blanket, coat, hat, and glove drive that ended on November 20th. And then in addition, on, just listed right below, Joanne had asked me for some, like, questions that students had for our representative, like, our representative. And mainly, they were just about, like, like, our environmental questions. And there's a more detailed list in my report, and you could look at that if you'd like. But that's all.
Good job, Mr. Larson. Thank you. Ms. Thompson submitted her report. So, that's it for reports. I missed something. Next, we're going to move on to current and old business. The first item is our chief of police. We're going to ask for a motion and a second to formally appoint current acting chief of police, Mr. William Whitmer, to the position of chief of police of the Belfont Borough Police Department.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Vote, please.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville, not on yet?
He's here. Mr. Brackville?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean, Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
Yes, and congratulations.
Thank you. Next is our shoring in process of Chief Whitmer, Mayor Johnson.
Mr. William Whitmer, please raise your right hand and respond with "I will." I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that I will perform the duties of chief of police for Belfont Borough with fidelity.
I will.
Congratulations.
I'll invite Bill's wife, Erin, to pin the badge on him, please.
There.
Take it off.
I would just like to briefly say, I moved here in 1999, and I was blessed to have Bill in, in class, in school. And he was a very reputable individual. He was a great athlete and a great person. And I am extremely proud to have him be the quarterback of our police force here. So, Bill, thank you and congratulations. I would like to invite Judge Kelly Gillette Walker to come up, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you, William Wade Whitmer III, solemnly swear or affirm, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that you will perform the duties of chief of police for Belfont Borough with fidelity?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a few seconds.
I'll keep this short. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Thank you, Borough Council members. It's an honor. I'd also like to take a moment to thank my wife, Erin, my daughter, Victoria, my family, my parents, Dorothy, and everyone here to support me in this. It means a lot to me. You all must have thought of something back in April when you appointed me into this position. And I made two statements that night. For the first time, I stood up here to address you. One, we're going to move forward from that point on. I think we did that. The second one, I told you I was going to ensure that we maintain, sustain a high level of police service in the borough of Belfont. I think we did that as well. But to accomplish that, I had to have a supporting cast who's here tonight, the men and women of Belfont Police Department. We need to give them a hand as well, because they had a big part in this to get us headed in the right direction. They stood behind me, support me, believed in my leadership, and that's why we're here today, and I'm truly honored. Also, council members, I thank you as well. Mr. Stewart, Mr. Holderman, you were also behind me the last eight months, made my job a lot easier. You're very accommodating, and I appreciate that. Lastly, it's an honor to be the next Belfont Police Chief. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, we are going to move along with our business meeting, which is extremely interesting. If you'd like to stick around, but I'm going to give you the next few minutes to exit and go enjoy what we just did. Or you're welcome to stick around and talk about the budget and other things. Yep. It's a lot of people. I'm going to let them exit. Well-
I already judged you.
Mayor, do you want to get a picture with the judge and the chief in front of the, before they all leave? Right. I, I just said that.
Make a five-minute recess.
Yeah, if he gets them to come back in, maybe with his parents. So, I need to take a recess or something.
It's up to you.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please take a picture, please.
That's a good question.
Please take a picture.
Well, I asked you to take a picture.
It's all good. Take all the pictures.
That's not a picture, that's a video. Fine. Come on. Get over there. Thank you.
Mom, get in there. Fuck, get me centered with the Bellefonte. One more. Todd, one more, Todd. One more. Perfect.
Yes, go Brown.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody left. Everybody wanted to stick around for your meeting, Doug. I know, but I gave him the option to stay. Yeah. Okay. Everybody's back. We're gonna move on to our next item here, which is the chief of police employment terms. We need council action here and motion in a second to formally approve the terms and conditions of employment for chief of police position for the period of December 2nd, 2024, through December 31st, 2025, as outlined in the November 18th, 2024 offer letter and related memorandum of understanding between the borough, Mr. Whitmer, and the Bellefonte Police Association, executed November 20th, 2024.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy.
Whoops. Yes.
Thank you. Next item is Spring Creek Watershed Commission Annual Dues. Council action has requested a motion in a second to approve the payment of $915.75 as part of the 2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion?
This is in the bulk water fund?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
If.
If not, we'll vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbell.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
And Ms. Toasty Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item here on the agenda is the draft budget was presented to council with staff recommended increases in the street lighting fund and the fire department fund. The increases below were suggested during the budget work session. Staff recommends council action to include each in the tentative and final budget.
I assume this is a motion. It doesn't say so here.
Do you have any comment on that?
Well, we're gonna go down the next line items.
Okay.
Each one. That's what's meant there.
Oh, okay.
So next is the parks funding for 2025. It was reviewed. A request was made to provide winter maintenance to the waterfront walkway, which was something that was identified as needed. Adding the winter season maintenance to the parks fund will increase the real estate tax by .20 mils. We need a motion in a second to approve the listing for the .20 increase in the tentative budget.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Seconded.
Thank you. Questions for... All right, left. Okay. No questions or comments? We'll vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbell.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Randy. We hear you.
Yeah, I'm looking back. Other notifications, is there an item for Spring Creek Water Resource Monitoring project requested for $2,859 for 2025? The council action request to include this amount in the tentative budget for 2025, asking for a measure of that in the cost of care.
We got that. That was before you called in. We, yeah, we did do that. Yeah, that's okay. You're welcome. Okay, the next item is the public transit, formerly CADA, funding for 2025. At the work session where the general fund was reviewed, a request was made to increase the line item 447.000, formerly CADA expense, public transit funding by $35,000 for 2025, and to state that this is a tentative budget. This increase may result in an increase in the real estate tax of approximately .35 mils. We need a motion in a second to approve the additional $35,000 of borough funds to be added to the line item 447.000 of the general fund for this tentative budget.
I'd like to make that motion with the additional revenue coming from use of reserve funds rather than increasing our taxes, as I explained earlier in the work session.
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? So, Joanne, restate what you'd like here, so everyone knows what they're voting for.
So it's the increase, the increase the public transit funding by $35,000 above what is currently in what was shown this evening, and have that additional $35,000 covered by the use of reserve funds that we have available for next year, rather than increasing our taxes.
Do you think we have that kind of... Are you sure that's something that can be done?
We can list it as... Sorry, we can list it in the tentative budget, and we can confirm that we have those reserves before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Joanne and Deb, I also have a question for you, just so I'm clear on this. This money may not even be used. Is that correct?
We're still in the process of trying to figure out exactly how to move forward, but we think it's really important to keep money in the budget to maintain at least the service that we're getting now, but have the possibility to be able to fund expansion if needed. We're going to have more information after the first of the year. Okay.
So should we just wait and have it restated that we want to have it come out of reserve funds instead of tax increase for the next meeting, instead of voting?
Well, it would be listed in the budget. Yeah, we could list it in the budget, as, again, it's a tentative budget. And just noting that it's reserve funds tonight. You have two weeks to think it over, and we can confirm in two weeks where the funds would come from if it's formally approved.
So we'll go ahead and vote on having it come out of reserve fund instead of tax dollars tonight?
Correct.
So that's what's before us to be voted on.
I'm not sure what we're reserving this for. I hear you, but we have $35,000, which was our usual budget. But that's what we had slated for this year, until CADA came out and asked us for $224,000. So what, where do we... I heard what you said, but I don't see it going anywhere at this time.
The service that CADA is providing, the B-line, they know that there is demand there. If we have additional revenue to put towards the service next year, there's a potential that they could expand what they're offering now, maybe reduce, reduce the fare, which is not consistent with the rest of the CADA system. They could remove the 24-hour prior reservation restriction. There are lots of things that can be adjusted to the current service that we're getting to expand the service and make it more usable by the public. What we're asking for is just the potential for increased funding to be there, should it be needed.
So, well, then we definitely don't want to put in there that we're raising taxes on something that may not even come into play.
Well, absolutely. This is by asking that it come out of reserve.
Not only that, but the B-line cannot service the Y store. The B-line cannot service Geisinger Medical Center. The B-line cannot stop a Giant Food Market.
Yes, it does.
Is Giant in, uh, Benner Springs?
No, Giant is in Benner Township. So that is within the service area. What we're, one of the things we're working on is with the economic drivers in the area. As was stated at the MPO, there is private funding for public transit, all those apartment complexes in State College that support the heavy, heavily used routes. What Joanne and I are working on is working with Y and Giant and Geisinger and Mount Nittany Medical Services, which are also in Spring Township, to see if there is a way for them to contribute to funding for service, not specifically to their destinations, but to the greater service area of the three contracted municipalities. So that's part of the process we're working on.
Again, I go back to who is using it that is not supplemented today by the county van service?
Anybody.
And what are those numbers?
Well, there's no way to know that, because CADA doesn't keep track of that public transit.
So we're asking our taxpayers to fund the ridership of the B-line, is basically what we're asking by increasing this mileage. That's the way I see it.
Well, potentially, but there's no way. CADA doesn't keep track of the age demographic unless it's the senior pass person or the summer youth ride.
Yeah, I can't support this until I see a plan in place that is shared equally among Spring, Benner, Bellefonte Borough.
Okay, thank you.
But we, part of the motion is to take this from reserved funds instead of raising taxes, correct? Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments before we vote?
Well, if we're gonna use reserve funds, I think we should look at some other things that need help, too. We're increasing for snow removal along the park that we could use reserve funds for, that we know will need to be done. So if you're gonna use reserve funds, let's take another look at the budget. Call the question.
Yep. Let's vote.
Mr. Bernier.
No.
Mr. Brackbell.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
No.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, five to three.
All right. Next item, Bellefonte EMS request for funding of one-half mil. Bellefonte EMS is currently funded by Bellefonte Borough at .30 mils. We're asking council to make a motion in a second to consider increasing EMS funding by increasing the mileage rate to .35 mils.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I'd like to discuss possibly even raising that a little more. They're asking for .5 mils on that, correct?
Yes.
I just think it's really important that we support this. There's so many of our services, and I think the EMS is another one that's been completely underfunded. When I started council, I had no idea that it was this poorly funded countywide, or most of the countywide, from what I can see. So I would like to really see this go up to .4, maybe even .45.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect, to amend the first one?
How do we do that, since the motion right now is to do it at .35?
You can make a motion to amend that motion by changing the number. But you have to give a number.
Right. But if people don't like the .4 or .45, then it would go back to the original one. Okay, I would like to amend this to go to .40 for the EMS. And I would like to make that motion.
And that money would come from the reserve fund?
Where's it come from now, though?
It'd be an increase, it'd be an increase in the real estate tax. I beg your pardon? It would be an increase in the line item.
Real estate tax.
For EMS, real estate tax. So we're gonna fund the B-line out of reserve funds, but we're gonna, we're gonna... I support this 100%, but we have reserve funds that could cover that. So, and we're supporting something that we don't even know exists with reserve funds. It's very, that's confusing to me. I see something much more important EMS than funding the additional $35,000 for the CADA funding, when we already have $35,000 in place. So you're adding 50% to that out of reserve funds, and you're asking the taxpayers now to say, "Well, let's increase the EMS and increase the mileage, even though we have reserve funds to cover that." I don't agree with that.
Can I comment? I just looked on page 60 of 67, which is the EMS fund, and there is no reserve funds at all applied to that particular account at this point. There is zero, there's nothing, there's no line item saying use of reserve funds. Under emergency funds on page 67, it has real estate taxes and interest income has revenue. There are no reserve funds listed there unless we, as council, would add another line item within that particular budget.
Yeah, I'm not clear on that. But unfortunately, I don't agree with the additional money for public transit.
Other comments about the EMS motion that's before us? To increase the mileage to .40, it's currently at .30. Any other comments?
Just to clarify, we try not to mix and match funds. Like, the EMS fund, the real estate tax money must be used for that service.
Like the EMS fund, the real estate tax money must be used for that service. Parks money must be used for that service or those functions. You know, so you're sort of mixing things up here by saying you're going to transfer money from the general fund to one of these other funds. We don't typically do that. We typically fund all the expenses of parks, for example, out of the parks fund, and those revenues pay for that fund. And likewise with EMS. We created EMS when we started that, that line item, when we started to make contributions to EMS. So I just want to clarify, you know, it's one thing to debate the, using the extra $35,000, but I would not start debating about transferring funds from the general fund to these other funds. Thank you.
Right. It's, it's before us how that fund is funded and where it's always been funded and it's been requested that we raise the millage. So we're going to raise what people pay in Bellefonte Borough to have EMS. And Barbara has made the motion and backed it by her comments. So that's what's before us. If we have any other questions about what's before us, if not, we're going to go to a roll call vote. We're voting to increase it to 4.0.
Uh-uh. .40.
.40. Excuse me.
I'd even be mad about that. Okay, Mr. Brinier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Randy, you there?
Yeah, nobody asked me, so yeah.
Yep.
That was a yes.
We're attuned about the EMS millage rate increase.
Yep, I'm ready. I just didn't hear my name.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consider approval of the tentative 2025 budget and to make tentative budget available for public inspection on or before December 6th. Need a motion in a second to approve the tentative 2025 budget with or without modifications.
So moved.
Have we modified anything?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments?
I do have a question. The change that we made so far, well, two things with the budget where we're reserved funds for public transit and then raising the EMS, will that be in the budget on the 6th?
Yes, yes. We'll make those changes. Anything changed this evening or approved, we'll reflect that in the tentative budget that's posted.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We're going to vote. Yes.
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Toasty Vacy?
Yes.
Budget process. The tentative budget will be made available in the Borough office during business hours and posted on the Borough website no later than December 6th. A public hearing on the tentative budget will be held during the December 16th council meeting. Tax ordinance adoption and the 2025 budget approval will be considered at the same meeting on December 16th, 2024. For information only. Next is an announcement about parking, right? The Bellefonte Borough Council meeting held on January 16th, 2024, council approved courtesy parking for the 2024 holiday season. What this means to the residents is the first time your, our parking enforcement officer observes your car with no time left on the meter, he or she will give you a complimentary pass of two additional hours. On their second pass through on the same day with no time on the meter and two hours having passed, a ticket will be issued. Courtesy parking will begin November 29th, which I think was, well, that was Thanksgiving Day, and it'll run through January 1st, 2025. We encourage you to use this opportunity to do some holiday shopping in the beautiful downtown Bellefonte area. We have a Bellefonte Borough open house right here at 301 North Spring Street. It's going to be planned for this Thursday, December 5th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is an open invitation to the community to come out and tour the building, meet the Borough elected officials and staff. Food donations for the event will be pursued. Next item is items for sale. The large wooden cherry desks that have not sold have been re-listed on municipid.com to be sold. There is no reserve. If the desks do not sell, efforts will be made to donate them to the surrounding municipalities. Online bidding will end December 16th.
Can that be put on the website again? If it's already, isn't already there, I didn't check.
I think it is. I'll double check though. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is new business. 2025 council meeting schedule proposed. The council will review and make recommendations for changes to the proposed meeting schedule. This council action will be scheduled for December 16th meeting.
I have a comment to make?
Yes, Joanne. Under that, that item?
Yes, that particular item.
Okay, the council meeting schedule.
Right. The only set of meetings shown on this document is that of the meeting for the council. I understand that the, that you decide not to include the schedules for the ABCs, has the ABCs set up their own schedule. That's perfectly fine. However, not placing them in a public document, in my opinion, does not give transparency to the public for all the work we and the ABCs do, and therefore, to my opinion, does it somewhat of a disservice to our community. Since the executive committee only wants us to vote on the meeting schedule for the council, my recommendation would be to modify this document for the next meeting when we actually have the vote, to include the other meeting times with a note on it saying that the ABCs are set up there for information only and are not subject to council approval. That way, the, that information is available to the public before we vote, and they, they know what's going on. Thank you.
Was that a question?
It was a comment that I would like to have the others put back on with a note above them saying, we are not voting on these, but this is for the public's information.
Any other comments on the council meeting schedule? Last item is public comment. Anybody in the audience have a public comment or on, on, council, Mr. Mayor? I have a question and a comment, I guess, as it pertains to the B-line or public transit formerly known as CADA. Deb and Joanne, would it be possible to get a future report as to how you made out with your discussion with Geisinger and Mount Nittany? I think it would be common sense and it's in the public's best interests and, and their health and welfare if they could help us in some way as well as Wise Markets. The bottom line is Wise Markets is going to lose business to Giant because the bus doesn't go to Wise Markets. So if you are in contact with them, could, could we maybe just get an update in, in the future to see where it's at?
Yes, absolutely. Something that we have been able to find out from Giant Market in Benner Township is they have approximately 145 employees. They have lost 14 employees who are unable to get to work because they don't have transportation. That's 10% of their workforce. So just in the last couple of months, there's been an, an impact, not just on the businesses in the area, but on employees, people who are trying to earn a living. So we're trying to work through this multi-layered problem.
Multi-layered complex and trying to get to the right person within each of these organizations. So for example, Geisinger has a public transit guru out of Danville. We're trying to get to come here and talk to us. That hasn't happened yet, but we're still having that discussion.
So Deb, that, that fact of the 14 Giant employees that are no longer there due to not having transportation, that was something you gleaned from, like, speaking to a manager?
I believe that came from the manager at Giant.
Hmm. So if Spring is not in the B-line contract and you negotiate with Geisinger, is it still possible to drop and pick off, pick up in Spring Township?
That's something we have to figure out. Also, this CADA has to be involved in this.
So, so if Spring chooses not to participate, can they still drop off and pick up at Geisinger?
That we're trying to find out.
I've been told that that may not be possible because of depending on where the funding comes from, state or federal. So even if you do negotiate a contract with Geisinger, do you have to convince Spring Township to become a member again?
We would not be negotiating a contract, I mean, as, as the task force, we would not be negotiating a contract with any of these businesses. It would be between those businesses and CADA because that's where the funding would go to maintain service areas. Now, how they, it would be able to do that if Spring Township as a whole is not involved, I don't know.
So there's a lot to...
And that's part of the questions we're going to be asking CADA when we, we meet with them in the first of the year. Our meeting next Tuesday is going to be solely focused on the detailed kinds of questions that you all are asking here this evening, and the task force wants to know so that we can have a good sit-down meeting with them to find out exactly what's going on. But because this is the holiday season, that meeting won't happen with Canada until the New Year.
There, good.
Thank you.
Like, I go, one more, I go back to the question. If we approve $33,000, $35,000 more, why can't we give vouchers to those in need that are Bellefonte Borough residents for transportation?
Because transportation is universal. We're not an island. The people who travel to and from, it isn't just about getting people in and out of Bellefonte. It's about getting people from the rest of the center region to and from Bellefonte. It's about getting our residents to anywhere they need to go within the CADA system.
So in that regard, those other boroughs and townships should be supplementing their rides as well that are coming from State College Borough to Bellefonte.
There's no...
From Benner Township to Bellefonte, from Spring Township to Bellefonte. In other words...
Who's your meeting with next Tuesday?
The transit, the task force's meeting.
Should take Mr. Johnson with you. He's got some good points.
We had Kerry Benninghoff was at our last meeting.
Did you?
He's the House Transportation Subcommittee Chair.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not, I'm not willing to put the Bellefonte residents flipping the bill.
Well, we understand that. It isn't about any one community, you know, supporting everybody else. It's just the, the system is integrated and covers a large area. People travel where they need to go for whatever reason they need to go there. We're trying to keep our three, our three municipalities connected with the rest of the CADA system so people can do what they need to do.
And that can be done through other resources, like the county van service.
If you're over age 60, it's terrific.
And that's where I ask, why can't vouchers be provided to those who are in need and Bellefonte residents with the addition, with the money that we've allotted, additional money to CADA? And you said that can't be done.
I don't think we said it couldn't be done. I'm just not sure how practical it would be because there are people who travel from all over the center region to and from Bellefonte. So that would mean there would have to be voucher systems in every other participating municipality.
Well, in closure, speaking for the, the people of Bellefonte, we appreciate you going to the task force. And as I said, I would definitely think Mount Nittany and Geisinger would be in, in interest in helping the, the health and welfare of our residents. And I know it's not that simple because it does go into Spring Township and Wise Markets as well as, as a business. You know, if, if they see and know that everybody's going to Giant and they're losing customers, that may spark some interest to, to come up with some funds to, to help in some way. So thank you for, for looking into that.
And thank you for your commendations.
Any other oral comment or questions?
Please. Mr. Mayor, I think you asked about this before, the sidewalk where the elementary school is being built. It's a walking and bike trail. It's very inconsistent what I've seen. I'm not there every day, but some, at one point, the entire trail sidewalk was blocked from Bishop Street out until halfway into Governor's Park. The next time it was not, and it was just marked where, where they go in and out. I understand the safety concerns of this, but it does not seem to be very consistent. It does make it very difficult. There are a lot of people that walk from the Governor's Park Apartments out to town or wherever they're going. And it, I want it to be safe, but it also should be somewhat consistent, I would think.
Thank you. I had numerous people reach out to me. It is very heavily used. It has been, as of recent, it has been open, I believe. It was totally closed, and then it was closed in some areas which made people have to go out on the road, which was not safe. Ralph, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I believe you were in a meeting with a couple people?
I was, yes. Basically, the reason the whole, the whole path was closed was they had a rock crusher unit right beside the pathway, right behind sort of Triangle Supply. And they, we, we met with them probably the Friday after the last council meeting, and they, they tried to get that finished up. It is finished up now, and they reopened that section of the path. We explained our concerns about pedestrians and all of that. They promised to work with us. They promised to try to eliminate one of the crossings, the crossings closest to Zion Road as soon as possible. As you get to the crest of the hill, there's a, there's a sewer line crossing, and then there's another driveway off of Governor's Park Road. They're hoping to get down, are they going to put crushed stone, fine crushed stone like you see on a bike path over those areas? And towards Spring, you know, they would try to resurface the sewer line area. But in that whole area, that whole intersection's going to be lowered, that hillside's going to be lowered. There will be some difficulties from time to time. Even the driveway off of Governor's Park Road, that'll be the main driveway for construction equipment. People will have to go out onto Governor's Park Road just because it's, it's too steep to get people over the driveway. At least it's on Governor's Park Road where there's a lot less traffic than cross there. But at least, they are trying to work with us and try to make improvements so people aren't on the road as little as possible.
My recommend, and I appreciate that, everybody was, was great. They went to, unfortunately, I couldn't attend the meeting. My suggestion was, I know they're working on the school district property, which impedes Bellefonte Borough property. My suggestion was maybe a temporary walkway or something because it is very heavily used. And I know when it was closed, like I said, I had numerous people reach out to me, people who walk, people who jog, people who walk their dogs, people who use that to, to go downtown to, to walk. So I appreciate you going to that meeting, Ralph, and, and speaking up for us, and hopefully it won't be too much of an inconvenience. And if it does seem like it's going to be a, a huge inconvenience, maybe something temporary for those people in the meantime.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything else from council? Okay, if not, I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
So, second?
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.
Are you looking to stay active and healthy in the comfort of your own home? CNET has a variety of exercise programs designed to help you stay fit and increase strength and flexibility. Strength training, moving freely, and zesty chair exercises all work on improving flexibility, ease of movement, and core body strength. Gentle yoga is a specifically designed yoga program that is easy on the joints and easy for beginners. Chair yoga has been created for those with limited mobility. CNET's exercise programs air several times each week on Channel 98 CETV. For specific airing times, please visit cnet1.org and click on CNET Schedules, or call CNET at 814-238-5031. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.
The Center Region Active Adult Center is a vibrant, inclusive, and happening location designed for active adults 55 years and over to be social and participate in new experiences while also staying close to home. We promote healthy aging through our many activities and health forums, as well as lifelong learning through classes and social interaction that suit almost any lifestyle. Whether you prefer line dancing followed by a walk, or a game of bridge and a meal, the center is sure to have something for you. Visit crpr.org for more info.